We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please stand and Ms. Jackson, could you please lay us some prayer?
Please bow your heads. Father God, we just want to thank you for who you are. This day, we thank you for your son. We thank you for your son Jesus's blood. We thank you for the Holy Spirit. We thank you that there's an indwelling. We also thank you that your presence is here in this meeting today. But Father God, we're making our request known to you today as being one body. Father God, we're asking that the Trumbull County Commissioners, the department heads, the employees, Father God, that you give them more patience, give them more understanding, give them more knowledge, give them more faith, Father God. We ask that not just for them, but for their families also. Father God, we also ask this same prayer for the city and the townships of that is part of Trumbull County, little God. We ask the same thing that we ask for the county. We ask for the city, the township and their families, little God. But we're just asking, Father God, that it is already written that we are peacemakers. We ask all these things in the name of your son Jesus. Amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Welcome, everyone. There will be no workshop or meeting next week due to the Commissioners' first time ever actually attending the Commissioners' Convention in Columbus. It's a first for Trumbull County.
Well, not exactly. Frank went to everyone.
Yeah, but three of us.
First for three of us, yeah.
First for three of us to attend, so. But the next public workshop will be on Tuesday, March 4th at 10:30 a.m. here in the meeting room. And our next regular meeting will be held on Wednesday, March 5th at 10:30 a.m. We will have a special meeting after today's meeting for departmental budgets, and that will be at 1 o'clock, so.
And for department heads, they don't have, their deadline now has moved to next Thursday at noon. They don't have to submit anything today or tomorrow to get it on the next agenda, so they've got a little bit of time.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk, roll, please.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated February 11th, 2025, and the regular meeting dated February 12th, 2025, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number two is to dispense with reading the minutes of the special meeting dated February 13th, 2025, and accept and approve the video recording of the meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number three is to approve the bills.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number four is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of notes in anticipation of the issuance of general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $6,41,000 for the purpose of A. retiring outstanding bond anticipation notes issued in 2024 for various purposes, and B. paying issuance costs of the notes.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number five is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of notes in anticipation of the issuance of general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $500,000 for the purpose of paying the costs of the blueprint Phase II water system project, together with all necessary appurtenances and paying issuance costs in connection therewith.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Loy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number six is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of notes in anticipation of the issuance of general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $750,000 for the purpose of paying the costs of the Pendleton-Gilmore Sanitary Sewer Project, together with all necessary appurtenances and paying issuance costs in connection therewith.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number seven is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of notes in anticipation of the issuance of general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $250,000 for the purpose of paying additional costs of the Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Project, together with all necessary appurtenances and paying issuance costs in connection therewith.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number eight is to approve the promotion of Anuhav Vinnyak as a fiscal specialist, non-bargaining employee with the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services effective April 7th, 2025. Mr. Vinnyak will be paid $2492 per hour with full county benefits and is required to serve a nine-month probationary period.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number nine is to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer David De Cristofaro to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit requested by the company listed, and that's Gregor Trucking.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 10 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed. And there's two permits for Enbridge Gas, Ohio, Utility Contracting, Inc., United Earthworks LLC, and American Transmission Systems, Inc.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 11 is to withdraw the petition for annexation seeking to annex property situated in the township of Weathersfield, Trumbull County, Ohio, and further known as being all of the new lots 1A of the replat of Lot 1 of Guermar Properties, Inc., plat number 1, as recorded at the Trumbull County Plat Instrument Number as listed, and other adjacent lands as set forth in the petition to the City of Niles. The request to withdraw the petition was received by the Board of Commissioners Clerk on February 13th, 2025, and is hereby accepted and shall be recorded on the Journal for record purposes.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
A question on the motion. I have a question. When we advertise for something like that, then they withdraw it? Are the monies recouped for advertising in the newspaper?
Um, yes, that hadn't been done in the past, but we are going to start doing that.
Yeah, especially on some of these, they bring them up and then they withdraw them.
Back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, one of them four times.
Yep, okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Loy.
Yes.
Yes.
Item number 12 is to approve the personnel action for Mr. Darrell Dunagan for the Special Projects/Facilities Administrator, pay range 15, year 10, 45, 46 per hour with the Building and Vehicle Maintenance Department, effective March 3rd, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 13 is to approve the promotion of Mrs. Kelly Lachowski from custodian at the Building Maintenance Department, pay range 3, year 5, 1750 per hour, to lead custodian, pay range 5, year 5, 2070 per hour, effective Monday, February 24th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 14 is to approve the submitted sick and vacation leave conversion plan for members of the OPBA at Trumbull County 911 for the term effective January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
For Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 15 is to approve the submitted sick and vacation leave conversion plan for AFSMI Local 3196, employees of the Trumbull County Auditor for the term effective January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 16 is to approve the submitted sick and vacation leave conversion plan for the non-bargaining personnel in the departments listed for the term effective January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second discussion. With this, this conversion over the past years, we've brought that down. There's, this is paying out sick leave and vacation leave. It does help lessen the burden when someone retires at a much higher rate, long-term for the county, and the employees are absolutely entitled to their vacations and the sick leave that they have. But I want to thank the departments that worked with us to get it down to the 80-40 where we are. We're leading through the Commissioners' Office. Many of the other ones, there are some contractual things, and some other departments set their rates differently, or some are much higher. And we ask, you know, as a board too, that they try to strive to work towards the 80-40 that we have to make it convenient on the taxpayers, to help us budget a little bit better, and not be such a hit, a random hit, a budget per se, because we don't know how many are going to take advantage of it at any given time. But the ones that have worked to move closer to that 80-40, we appreciate that, we thank them.
I second that.
I second that also.
So I'll take the vote for item 16, Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
For Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 17 is to approve the submitted sick and vacation leave conversion plan for the members of AFSMI Local 2493 in the departments that were submitted for the term effective January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 18 is to approve the submitted sick and vacation leave conversion plan for non-union employees of the Trumbull County Common Police Court Domestic Relations/Juvenile Court, Probate Court, Central District Court, and Eastern District Court for the term effective January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 19 is to approve the submitted sick and vacation leave conversion plan for AFSMI Local 3808-A, employees of the Trumbull County Recorder for the term effective January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 20 is to approve the submitted sick and vacation leave conversion plan for members of the OPBA Sheriff's Department, employees in Unit 1, deputies, Unit 2 sergeants and lieutenants, and Unit 5 clerical cooks and maintenance for the term effective January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 21 is to approve the submitted sick and vacation leave conversion plan for members of the OPBA Sheriff's Department, employees in Unit 3 Corrections Officers, Unit 4 Jail Lieutenants, and Unit 6 Corrections Sergeants for the term effective January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Yes.
Item 22 is to approve the submitted sick and vacation leave conversion plan for bargaining employees of the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, AFSMI 458, for the term effective January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 23 is to approve the submitted sick and vacation leave conversion plan for bargaining employees of the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, CSEA Division, AFSMI 3808, for the term effective January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 24 is to amend Commissioners' Regular Meeting dated December 4th, 2024, item number 8, for the award of a contract to the lowest and best bidder, DJV Supplies, Inc., for the Trumbull County Planning Commission Carpet Replacement Project, 185 East Market Street in Warren, in the amount of $21,276.88. Amendment is necessary to add or revise the following items. The correct fund number for payment is the fund number that is listed there. And number 2, the addition of language stating that the source of the funds is from the county's local government, American Rescue Plan Funds. Number 3, the addition of language that the award of the contract is being made to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. And 4, the addition of a note stating that in the county's municipal system, DJV Supplies, Inc., has a doing business as the Selma House. In addition to the address indicated above for the business, for the purposes of this project, the business name and address that is being used is DJV Supplies, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 25 is to amend Commissioners' Regular Meeting Agenda dated January 8th, 2025. Item number 10, for the award of a contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Straight Line Interiors, to provide labor and materials for the Trumbull County Planning Commission Ceiling Renovation Project located at 185 East Market Street in Warren, paid through ARPA in the amount of $19,220. Amendment is necessary to change the source of payment to the fund number as listed.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 26 is to approve or deny construction of County Project Number 2-S-17, the Smith-Stewart Road Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project located in Vienna Township. The public hearing for this project was held on January 23rd, 2025. Results of the public hearing and public comment period indicated a 100% of property owners are in favor of said project, and 0% are opposed based on the number of service connections.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 27 is to approve change order number 1 with Pollard Land Services, Inc., for the Scoville Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, number 5-S-16. This is a zero-sum change order, and is necessary to extend the substantial and final completion date from February 20th, 2025 to May 6th, 2025. Supply chain issues and inclement weather have caused significant delays regarding this project.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 28 is to authorize Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, to issue the notice to proceed to MJD Excavating, Inc., for the countywide Phase 1 Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program. The project involves a combined total of 17 sanitary household connections located in Champion, Vienna, Brookfield, and West Farmington.
Motion to proceed.
Second motion.
Loy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 29 is to authorize payment to Direction Home of Eastern Ohio, Inc., for the local match dollars obtained from Trumbull, Mahogany, Columbiana, and Astubula Counties for Title III federal funding under the Older Americans Act to provide critical services for older adults, such as home-delivered meals, in-home assistance, and other supportive services to be rendered for fiscal year 2025. $1,250 to be paid quarterly for a total amount not to exceed $5,000.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 30 is to exercise Trumbull County's option to renew the contract between the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners and Direction Home of Eastern Ohio, Inc., for the access to the agency's social assistance management system for additional one-year period effective March 1st, 2025 through February 28th, 2026. The base cost for this program is $5,000 annually, plus the renewal of license fees for providers is $446.8 per license. Six licenses are needed at this time for a total amount, including the base cost of $7,676.48.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 31 is to amend Commissioners' Regular Meeting Agenda dated October 9th, 2024. Item number 11, to commit $750,000 from Senior Levy Fund Number 065 for the next year, beginning January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025, to support countywide senior transportation for non-grant periods and any 5310 ODOT grant programs awarded with local share matching funds. Amendment is necessary to extend the commitment through December 31st, 2027. At the time of the original Journal volume, future funding was unknown due to Senior Levy expiration date of December 31st, 2024. On November 5th, 2024, Trumbull County residents supported the request for replacement per election results.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 32 is to approve change order number 2 as submitted by Phillips Secanic Architecture, Inc., for the construction of the Trumbull County Engineer Office Project located at 650 North River Road, Warren, and contracted by DeSalvo Construction. Change order number 2 is for an increase of $22,325, revising the total contract amount to $1,017,175. Change order number 2 is necessary to relocate ERV-1 to break room, relocate Louvre locations, replace ceiling system and lights as indicated on the submitted Bolton 2 drawings. This change order increases net cost of the project by the amount of $6,175.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Loy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 33 is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for mitigation of future natural disasters, whereas the county has received a distribution of monies from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, and whereas, consistent with the guidelines imposed by the Treasury Department and final rule, the county decided to issue a grant to a nonprofit Warren Amateur Radio Association. And whereas, by way of a resolution adopted on December 11th, 2024, the county entered into a grant agreement with the Warren Amateur Radio Association. And whereas, the county wishes to modify a provision in the grant agreement as set forth in Paragraph 11 of said agreement pertaining to the minimum general liability insurance requirements. Therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners that the grant agreement approved by way of resolution adopted on December 11th, 2024 shall be modified as to Paragraph 11, reducing the minimum general liability insurance coverage from $2 million to $1 million, as reflected in the amended grant agreement, and other provisions of the grant agreement shall remain the same.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Loy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 34 is to amend the contract awarded to Baker Bednar Snyder and Associates for the Dog Pound Design Qualification Project at its new location next to the Animal Welfare League located at 812 Youngstown-Kingsville Road in Vienna, in the amount of $192,000. Amendment is necessary to increase the original design fee by $13,700, revising the total contract amount to $205,700 to be paid to and from the funds as listed and to appropriate accordingly. Additional fees were due to design work that was not included within the original scope of this project.
And this was, motion to approve, first of all.
Second motion.
And discussion. This was amended overnight. It was changed slightly from what we talked about yesterday. So they did move it down to 13.7.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes. Yes.
Item 35 is to approve the appointment of Mr. Mark Bodo as a member of the Trumbull County Children's Service Board for a three-year period commencing March 1st, 2025, and ending February 29th, 2028.
Motion approved.
Second.
Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 36 is to approve the appointment of Reverend Dr. Avon M. Odom as a member of the Trumbull County Children's Service Board for a three-year period commencing March 1st, 2025, and ending February 29th, 2028.
Motion approved.
Second, and discussion, both of these candidates have outstanding resumes. I think they're going to be awesome board members for you.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
For Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 37 is to designate Ms. Amy Shannon to serve as a representative for Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, on the Family and Children First Council for the term commencing February 20th, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Yes, and with discussion, I want to thank Amy first for attending on my behalf. And this does happen when Commissioners aren't readily available at all times, where they can have a representative that will still sit in and then bring us, or me, bring me the information that she had received. Matter of fact, that meeting was today at 8:30 a.m. So I just want to thank Amy Shannon for sitting in as my representative. Thank you, Amy.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would like to skip to number 40. We have an executive session for number 38, but the Clemens Nelson who we were going to meet with there are not available until 11:20. So I would ask that we go to number 40, and I'd like to make the motion to go in the executive session pursuant to RC 12122G3 to conference with an attorney for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners concerning a dispute involving the Board of Commissioners that is subject to pending or imminent action.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We're ready? Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to O R C one two one two two G four, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations of bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Um, I think it was supposed to be G three, yeah, forty-one.
Oh, to reconvene from executive session pursuant to O R C one two one two two G three to con- to conference with an attorney for the Tormal County Board of Commissioners concerning a dispute involving the Board of Commissioners as subject to pending or imminent court action.
Second motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Now, I would like to make a motion to enter an executive session pursuant to Ohio Revice Code one two one two two G four, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations of bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Okay, we'll be back shortly on this one.[167.41]
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to Regent Bean from Executive Session pursuant to ORC 12122G4, preparing for conducting and reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Um, I think it was supposed to be G3, yeah, 41.
Oh, to Regent Bean from Executive Session pursuant to ORC 12122G3 to conference with an attorney for the Tormal County Board of Commissioners concerning a dispute involving the Board of Commissioners and subject to pending or imminent court action.
Second motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Now, I would like to make a motion to enter an executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 12122G4, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Second motion?
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be back shortly on this one.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I like that, a little bit of...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to ORC 12122G4, preparing for conducting and reviewing negotiations of bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes. Okay, that concludes our normal work session. There is a special meeting at 1 o'clock for departmental budgets. We're going to move on to public discussion, or a public comment, I'm sorry. If anybody has anything that they would like to discuss, just come up, give your name and reasoning for discussion. Anyone? Boy. Well.
I guess there's some people here I see from Warren Township. The motion for the injunction has been filed, and it's been served and delivered also off to the Park District. But it has not, as of notification to us, been ruled on as of yet. We have a call over to the attorney. Apparently, he's across the street in court right now. I don't know if it's pertaining to that or not, but I anticipate we'll hear from our attorney very soon. With that, we did make a motion last week to file the injunction. Our attorney had talked to Warren Township's attorney, who asked if they could be added on to that with us. So when it was filed, it was on behalf of us and Warren Township to the judges, and asked for an emergency measure to be done, and then schedule a hearing for a later date for a more permanent one, in hopes to bring the Park Board to the table with the EPA, us, and Warren Township. And that's all we're asking for there is they stop what they're doing and listen to what the EPA has to say, and then we all move forward in a more peaceful manner after that. And again, I want to reiterate, we do care about the parks. We do care about the bike trail. We worked awful hard, not only us, but people before us, to ensure that we have that bike trail through the whole county, and it's maintained, and ensure that we have the properties that we have. We take pride in the amount of properties that we do have here and the services that we provide for recreation for the citizens. We don't want to hurt that in any way, shape, or form. This injunction is, and this budget stuff we're talking about, is a tool in negotiations that we have to use right now, because we can't let them not represent the people they serve, in our opinion. We have to make sure that they are respectful of not only the trustees and the board, but the citizens they represent, and they listen. And if they don't listen, there's no other recourse we have. We can't just let them continue on with what they're doing and keep throwing money at them to do something that we believe is contrary to the public's best interest. And we will, in worst-case scenario, we're not going to shutter our parks. We're not going to use the public that way. There will be a way for the bike trail to still be maintained. There will be, we'll figure ways out around it if we should have an impasse there. We're not going to do any threats of we're shutting down services, we're closing the bike trail, we're doing it, you know, it isn't about that at all. And this is about just having them be respectful of the process and uphold their duty. They've sworn to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Ohio, and serve the public under their authority.
And I'd just like to add, Commissioner, that, you know, to note that the commissioners do own the trails. They own the parks. So to come out and to say we're going to shut it all down or shutter it is utter nonsense, just like Commissioner Malloy had mentioned. Those parks will stay open, and we will find ways to maintain, cut grass, do, you know, the needed maintenance and what we, you know, what we're obligated to do. So I think that we need to come to the table. We need to have an amicable solution that works for everyone. And to, you know, to put out there that they're going to close the parks like some kind of a threat, I think that that's premature.
Right. With or without an executive directive, the services will be maintained, one way or another. If myself and Mr. Hernandez need to get a lawnmower and get out there and do it, it's going to be, it'll be done.
Thank you for volunteering me, Commissioner.
Well, that would be a good sight to see.
Well, you got the trash duty, Tony, so you empty the trashcans.
The only thing I'd like to add is, you know what? We need to get back to the table, and we need to sit down and get some communications going, and just lower the temperature, and let's see how we can solve this issue and move on. But you know what? We have to sit down at the table, and we have to start discussion. And I think that was the point of the injunction. Let's start there, and let's get this thing behind us. Not this thing, the issue. Let's get it behind us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any public comment before we close? We're going to adjourn the meeting. If not...
Hold on, hold on, Kay. We're going to need you to say that again after you've announced your name and who you represent, for the record.
Thank you. Kay Anderson, Warren Township trustee. So we just want to thank you on behalf of the Board of Trustees for listening to us. It's been going on like six years, and hopefully, we can find a peaceful solution. I guess the only question that the other trustees have asked is, have you had any feedback from the other parks since the last meeting, when made the announcement about filing the injunction?
I haven't.
I haven't, but I, you know, they do have legal counsel, so I'm sure that anything would have to go through legal counsel. So, you know, we've, I'm sure Commissioner Malloy, you've not had any discussion.
I've got nothing other than I've seen some Facebook posts from Mr. Brown, and that's it. No official reach out to us, and no correspondence at all.
I only have one question. Where are we at with the meeting with the EPA and that meeting that was supposed to be set up, maybe with the Governor's Office, the EPA, everybody? Is that still on, or where are we at with that?
The meeting was asked to be scheduled by the EPA Deputy Director, Mr. Martin, and that's where the board said, no, they're not attending the meeting. So there's, it's a moot point. We could have the meeting with the EPA, with us and Warren Township, but the Park Board will not accept anything that comes with that meeting unless they said they hear it for themselves, which was told to us by Mr. Fabrizio and Mr. Sauer, said, plan the meeting, we'll be there. We planned the meeting. They refused to schedule to be at that meeting, or they said they weren't sending anybody to the meeting. So right now, until they say yes, reset the meeting again, we're at an impasse.
Well, maybe we should have our attorney talk to their attorney and see if we can get that meeting back on schedule.
I think, I think Mr. Wilson has reached out, so we're, we'll see what happens, you know, especially with all this that we have. But I will say too, over the last two weeks, you know, Commissioners, we've had three, at least three days a week, with 12-hour days at least that I think we've had, so we were tackling a lot of, a lot of issues. And I could tell you, the last two weeks have been very, very hopeful for the future of Trumbull County, and we'll have more to come on a lot of it. But I appreciate the cooperation and the hours that you both, you gentlemen, were putting into it, and we're matching each other's hours as far as, it seems like it starts at 7:30 in the morning, and we're taking calls all the way till 10 at night over the last couple of weeks. And I'm happy that we've all kind of found our stride with that, and we're all handling these calls and tackling the issues one at a time.
And I'd just like to add to that, Commissioner, that I believe, you know, our residents in Trumbull County, due to the way that this board is functioning currently, is going to see some amazing growth in economic development here in our county. There's some great things on the horizon, and it's been said that those things are coming to fruition because of the fact that the board, the commissioners now, are able to finally get things done without, you know, all the chaos and all the controversies that went around. Matter of fact, our viewership here went from 120 to about 15, listening into these meetings. That says something. No soap operas, but...
We're all rowing in the same direction, I believe, and a lot of the communities are following suit with that. We've had good talks with other communities too, over the last couple of weeks.
And I would just like to add that, you know what? There's no question that we have some bumps in the road, but, you know, we're going to work through those. It's going to take us some time to get those issues behind us, but once we get those behind us, then that's when you're going to see the real difference in this board, because we're all on the same page, and we want to make Trumbull County a lot better than what it's been. And we can do that, but we just, we've got some issues. We just have to work through it.
Okay, Commissioners, I want to remind you, we have a, at 1 o'clock, a special meeting, a departmental budget meeting, and that'll start at 1 PM. If no other business, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I second the motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.